Alright, I am live with the one and only real Frank Mayo. We're gonna be digging in to the brand new Range Trainer Pro post-flop tool today. And we're raw. Frank, you've never used this as far as I know. I've never used this. So this is gonna be our first time using this tool and dig again to some theories.
Yeah, I've never, I've never used this. The closest I've got to using something like this is the Vision GTO thing from Run It Once. And I really couldn't figure it out. DTO, you showed me DTO a while back and it's very simplified. You know what I mean? From what I've used is just it doesn't look anything like this, really, you know?
Yeah, I'm excited about this, obviously. Go ahead.
I mean, I'm just saying, one other, one other one, there's another one called Odin that I've kinda messed around with. But they still have a lot of bugs that need to be fixed with Odin.
Yeah, and this is still
It's just another GTO trainer.
This is still in pre-release. I'm sure we'll run into some hiccups here and there. But what I'm excited about is really being able to look at some specific spots and kinda get a feel for some of the mistakes I'm making from a theory standpoint. And I think as we go through this, we'll kind of also be able to talk about spots from an exploitative and really talk about spots where our exploit strategy and our theory strategy differentiate and why. And that's gonna be really important as we try to get really well-rounded in both styles of play. Obviously, we're gonna need time, we're gonna have times where we really need to rely on theory. We're gonna have times we really need to rely on exploits. But being able to switch in and out of both styles is gonna be super important. And so what I have here, Frank, is I've got, I've pulled up like, I don't know, 150, 200 hands. Basically 30 big blinds effective, which is an area we both have to work on. And it's just early position versus big blind, early position versus button, early position versus middle position. I think most of the spots we're gonna run into today will be in Range Trainer from based on what have looked like and what's been solved. We run into a few hands where it's like, oh, this isn't solved and we'll just go on to the next one. But this should be fun. Let's, uh, let's dig in here. So for those of you guys watching this, again, we've, we're just getting into this tool for the first time. So we'll spend a little time talking about how it works, how to use the tool and kind of walking through it. When you first pull up the page, you're gonna get this interface. And this like white Range Trainer Pro logo is basically us. And so like if you were to solve a hand where we were in middle position, you would click on the pulldown, switch to middle position. If we were a button, you'd switch to button. This is just basically determining where we are. And then it also goes ahead and pulls up the theory range for us for the position there. Since, since everything we're doing today is an EP, we're just gonna happily be here. And then all the different stacked ups right now, most of the database focuses on the 30 big blinds, which we're gonna stay. So, once we have a hand, so we've got our Jack 8 suited here, which you'll see is slightly out of theory. And I would suspect, well.
On my end, listen, on my end with the where it shows the hand ranges and stuff, they're a little wonky, it's a little out of, I don't wanna say it's out of focus. It's just hard to see. You know what I mean? Like, I know what they are just because I'm used to seeing these ranges.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll be able to fix that now, but I will, I'll call them out. And if there's anything you're unsure of, just tell me like a particular combo and I'll just tell you what it is. So like, here, Jack 8 suited is just outside. So like Jack 9 suited is an open here, 10 8 suited is an open, Queen 9 suited is an open. This is like outside of theory a little bit. And what I was gonna say is, I think probably from early position, we really shouldn't be trying to get too far out of theory. I know like when we're deep stacked, we can kind of like have some fun and open really wide, open some suited hands, you know, kinda get a little out of trouble. But I think specifically in this spot, we should probably stay pretty close. Villain does make a call. So in this situation, what I do in Range Trainer is I come up here and I click under the big blind. And I select call. And it's basically going to load the situation here. Now, Range Trainer does have some spots where they will slow you down. They'll have like the fair play use because they don't want people, you know. Yeah, they don't want them using this as real-time assistance. So we'll run into some times where there'll be a countdown timer. That's basically just to stop people or to deter people from using in-game. So once you get a flop, we have this 10 10 5 rainbow flop. You go to the flop finder up here and you literally just click in 10 10 5. Now you'll notice down here, and this is probably hard for you to see Frank, but there's only two options. And the reason there's only two options is because we basically only have two different types of boards. We have basically a two-tone board and a three-tone board. Range Trainer doesn't list every three-tone board available because they all are gonna play the same. And you can just adjust what your suit is based on how it matches the board. So here we have a rainbow board. So I'm choosing the 10 of Diamonds, 10 of Hearts, 5 of Clubs, Rainbow Board here. And it's gonna take a second. We got 15 seconds on the fair use delay. And then what this is gonna pull up is it's gonna pull up the big blinds actions first. We get to see both sides of it. So what we're gonna see here in a second is we're gonna see what the big blind is supposed to do. And it won't be very surprising on a board like this. You're gonna see all this yellow here because the big blind is basically supposed to check everything. And the reason the big board is supposed to check everything is in this situation, we have a very static board. The best hand is not gonna change very often. Like the literal best hand is quad, so it's not gonna change at all. The relative best board's really not gonna change much at all either because the odds of us both having trips is pretty low. So because we're in a situation where the early position opener has huge range advantage and we have a fairly static board, the big line is just supposed to check here 100% of the time. Even if they have like a hand like, let's just say they have 10 9 or Jack 10 or Queen 10, like the big blind, even when they flop trips, the early position opener is gonna see bet here such a high percentage of the time. There's no value to the big blind betting. So the big line just checks here 100% of the time. And in this situation, the big blind did check. And so now it's to us. And this is where the meat and the potatoes, Frank, of the situation comes. So what we get to see here is, uh, everything here is basically monotone for us. Now, this is all the hands that we're actually supposed to get to this flop with. So again, like if we were to have Jack 8 suited here and we click on it, we're not gonna see any info because technically we're not supposed to have this here. But there's not a lot of difference between Jack 8 suited and Jack 9 suited. So we could click on Jack 9 suited and kind of see how Jack 9 suited treats this board and pretty much treat it the same as Jack 8 suited because they're pretty close to being the same hand. Slightly different backdoor draws and whatnot. But what's interesting here, this static board, it's really straightforward. The theory is betting 99.98% of the time is see betting 25% here. Thoughts on that?
What did you say? You said that it's see betting 28%?
25% pot, quarter pot, 99.98% of the time.
100% agree.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, you and I have gone over this before and I've said this, I, I've said this lots of times. I mean, we, uh, we raise in position pre-flop and get called by someone out of position and they check to us on the flop. Uh, we are printing money when we bet, when we see bet. It's just, it's a print money play.
Yeah. What's interesting to me is, are you betting your quad 10s here? This is what, this is probably the most interesting thing to me, is that we're betting quad 10s here.
I'm betting everything.
Yeah.
Honestly, because I mean, if we have quad 10s, we bet. Villain is not gonna put us on quad, they're not gonna put us on quad 10s.
Right.
Um, if we check, so let's say we check. What are they gonna hit to catch up on the turn? It's hard for them to have, like if they have an ace, it's, it's a weak ace. More than likely, or a weaker ace.
A lot of their, a lot of their catch-up hands probably float anyway, right? Like if they have ace highs, they're gonna call it 25%.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, either they're gonna, either, that's, that's, that's how I feel. I feel like if, if we don't bet there, I feel like we're missing out on a street of value.
No.
Because how many times have you had absolutely nothing and you see bet? And then, or you had something, a pair, whatever, and you see that and then you get called and then you bet the turn and they fold on the turn.
Right.
Just because they're floating to, to try and catch up. It happens a lot. I try to be, I try to bet, you know, if, if I'm gonna play with these people, this person, villain, more than, you know, maybe an hour or something, or more than a thousand hands, something like that, then I'm going to approach this the same way I would any hand. I would, I would definitely see that right there.
Yeah.
That's just me. I, I don't, I don't know if that's the GTO.
Well, what's cool is
But it's the print money play.
We've got a spot where we get to do something with range. And theory is so complicated that anytime we get to do something with range, it's like an exciting moment. Cause I don't have to think about it, right? Like we got a really static board, we've got range advantage. We just get to with our entire range, bet small here and feel very confident about it. And yeah, if we wanna be balanced, you're right, we've got so many bluffs here because we're just supposed to bet so much of our range on this static range advantage situation that we have to vet our value too. So it makes sense that we would have to bet 10s there. But in the past, like I guarantee it's a spot where I haven't bet as often as I probably needed to against good players. As played, we bet closer to one-third pot, which is just a lazy bet on my part. Because, you know, typing in 1.24 was gonna take more time. So that's, that's a small area we can get better. So so this one, I don't know if this spot will be solved. This will be an interesting place to check. So let me, we're gonna hit this X in the top left and this basically resets, uh, Range Trainer here. So we have an EP open with Ace Queen off. We have an MP call. Let's see if this'll work or not. Crunch, crunch. No, this one's not solved. We'll try EP versus MP2. We might not be able to do, okay, this spot did work. Cool. So this is close. It's not exactly the same as EP versus MP, but it'll be similar enough that we can get some info from it. And then we have a 10 4 4 monotone board. Or sorry, rainbow board. So we'll choose the rainbow board here. Now, this is a little bit different because their calling range is gonna be stronger. So it'll be interesting to see if anything changes here. This is also a high-low-low board instead of a high-high-low board. Wait for the fair use delay to kick through. Okay. So, in this position now, the, the biggest thing that's gonna be a difference here between this hand and last hand is we're out of position this hand. And right away, you can see all the yellow in here. We're see betting at a much lower percentage because of the fact that we're out of position. And Frank, I know you, you, you naturally gravitate towards a less, a lower percentage of see bets out of position.
Right.
So, uh.
It, 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 um, when you're out of position, um, I mean, you can, uh, when you are checking, you, uh, there are things you can do, I mean, like especially on a board like this, uh, uh, check raising or check called and check raising turn. Is a good play a lot of times. That way, uh, since we do have Ace Queen and let's say we got called by a pair of sevens. Uh, we, we check here, they bet, we call. Turn comes off blank, we don't hit Ace or Queen, we check, they bet again, we can raise them and you know, basically just take, steal equity from them or just take, uh, take the pot down. Because they're not calling us with sevens, they're not calling us with Ace King, they're not calling us with King Jack, Queen, Queen Jack and whatnot. I mean, a lot of times they're calling us, they're calling our raise with, with pocket pairs and other hands that they are looking to either set mine or flop a flush with or or flush draw or straight draw and stuff like that. And I like checking here because it, it allows us to do a lot of things. Not just on the flop, but it sets us up for the turn and river bet, uh, play as well.
Well, one of the things that
If that makes sense.
It does, but one of the things we're both gonna have to grow in and you can kind of see it here, is that theory will take a lot of these spots. And rather than just saying, this combo is a bet, this combo is a check, it does a lot of partial frequencies so that it can maintain a high enough threshold of betting, but at the same time have good board coverage. And so like, I know it's a little bit harder for you to see on your screen, but like, all of this Broadway is like partial bet, partial check, right? We have very few hands here, like Jack 10 suited is a pure bet. 8 7 suited is a pure check. These low pocket pairs are mostly pure checks. A 7 suited, A 8 suited, A 6 suited. Those hands are all pretty pure checks. But most of these hands are partial frequencies. And so this is gonna get tricky to kind of internalize and get comfortable with. Because it's gonna be important to keep our range balanced and also just to allow ourselves to be in a spot where, I mean, just imagine playing against this range, right? Like knowing that a percentage of the time they're raising Ace Queen off and a percentage of the time they're checking just makes it that much harder to play against. But this is a hard thing to be disciplined and do. If we click on Ace Queen off with our particular holdings, it doesn't, it's interesting here. So Ace of Diamonds, I'm just looking at the higher frequency bets. And the lower frequency bets. I'm not really sure. Ace of Diamonds, Queen of Hearts. Ace of Hearts, Queen, I, I really don't know at first glance why some of these are high-frequency bets than the others. The suits don't really seem to make sense. Like Ace of Diamonds, Queen of Hearts is 67%. Ace of Hearts, Queen of Diamonds is 57%. I don't know what the difference is. But it looks like this is largely just a mixed bet. Now, the, the other thing that I'll point out that's kind of really obvious to me here is we're betting almost exclusively two-thirds pot here. What's your standard see, see bet size here?
It, it really depends, it depends on the player a lot of times. I mean, if we're see betting, you, uh, if we see that small, we're basically, we're either getting a call or getting raised a lot of times.
Yeah, and I think specifically against MP's flattening range.
I don't like to look weak. I don't like to look weak.
Yeah.
So, um, a half bet, or half pot to two-thirds pot bet is it's fine with me. I mean, any, I mean, we are out of position. So, I mean, if they're going to, um, it's, it makes it a lot easier for them to raise us if we bet small.
That's one of the things I wanna look for is is this a pattern where we find that most of our out-of-position bets are larger sizing? Now, obviously, like this is a small stakes tournament on ACR. I'm gonna do a lot of exploitative bets. So we're gonna see, um, us take a lot of exploitative lines. And, and you can see right away, like this is what happens, right? Like I bet small, I get raised. And then theory, let's just go ahead and put this in. I'm, I'm almost guaranteeing you theory will call this. So let's just say we bet 20% here, which we almost never do from a theory perspective. And, and this is cool. Like we'll get to see like if villain raises, what we're supposed to do here with Ace Queen. I can almost guarantee you it's a call. So the villain is supposed to call. So this is a cool thing too, right? When we go really small on this flop, look at what villain's response is supposed to be. 76% call. 19% raise, 25% pot, 2% raise, 75% pot, fold 2% of the time. So from a theory perspective, they're never supposed to fold to that see bet. It, it just doesn't accomplish anything, which is kind of a cool thing to see. Kind of makes sense for why, um, why they, they're doing that. The other thing that's interesting here is a lot of their raises don't have to be very large.
I don't know. It's a huge mistake for them to fold to a small bet.
Yeah.
You should always, I mean, I'm, I'm
That's why it's such, that's why it's such a good exploitative bet. Because they're never supposed to fold and the average player will fold a good percentage of the time. So that's why we get away with the really small bet from an exploitative standpoint. But we're playing a good player, you're dead on. They're never supposed to fold here. We can see that. They're not gonna fold. So our bet doesn't accomplish anything. All it does is inflate a pot while we're out of position. And we don't know where we are because we're kind of like in the middle of our range here. So, um, if they raise, so we'll put this raise in. Let's see what our response is supposed to be. And it'll be interesting to see. Yeah, that, this is great. They're never supposed to fold to our see bet. When they, when they, not check raises, but when they raise our small see bet, we're never supposed to fold to their, to their raise. We're supposed to call 77% of the time. Ace Queen off is a 100% like fist pump call. And it's even got some re-raises in it, which is pretty savage. Cause I don't know, I know, I, I can see you, Frank. I can definitely see you finding some re-raises here. I, I, I don't have it in my game right now to like, just be like, you know what?
You've been looking at too many of my hand histories. I love sending you those things, right? I was thinking about actually like just selling hand histories. Because if you only knew how many people ask me for hand histories, like it, it's pretty crazy. It's, but it's usually people that have no clue really what they're doing.
It's like all of our
I just don't wanna take the time.
All of our Ace of Clubs and Ace of Diamonds want to just pop off here, which is hilarious. And so, yeah, like this is a defend. It's interesting to me, this is a defend too when we're this shallow. I mean, I knew it was gonna be a defend, but like, I, I didn't know that it was gonna be this absurd. So that's cool. We've done a couple of hands and we've seen some interesting trends. We'll have to see if they continue. Alright, so we've got King Queen off here. Alright, so this is, this is almost an identical situation. This is EP versus MP2. We're calling it MP2 because the MP's not in the database right now. What?
I don't like this. I don't like raising, I don't like playing King Queen off under the gun.
Well, this, this is, this is within theory, but it's close. So like if you wanted to, if you wanted to get away from this, like it, it's a little tight, but I don't hate it. Especially if you're gonna mix in a few extra suited combos. Like it, it is a, it is a sound theory open. But you can be a little bit flexible with these things. So, let's see, what did we do wrong here? Oh, we gotta wait for the, I always forget about the fair use. So this is interesting. This board is different than the 10 4 4 board in that we have a lot more Kings in our range than we have fours in our range. And you can notice a lot more browed on this screen. We basically have checked 21% of the time. Among our, excuse me, biggest checks, um, Ace 7 suited that doesn't have backdoor is a pure check. A 6 suited, all of our A 6 suited actually doesn't, is a pure check here. It looks like a lot of our suited that basically have no backdoors are gonna check. So it's a good thing to know like our backdoor flush draws matter here in these really strong boards. Uh, I was like looking at the nuts here, right? Like the quads are basically gonna be a mixed range, 70% bet, small, 30% uh, check. Ace 10 offs, where we block, uh, backdoor flush draws, double block backdoor flush draws seem to be the biggest bet frequencies. And then the, uh, like where we've got the Ace of Spades in our hand, which is basically basically not blocking any nut backdoor flush draws. Those are our purest check backs. But it's a pretty heavy bet here. And again, similar to the last hand, it's, uh, 67% betting two-thirds pot, 11% betting 20% pot. So we're doing a lot more of this larger-sized see bet out of position. I'm trying to find just like some of our
The wheel aces, the
The Ace 3, Ace 4, yeah. And these are basically hands that have backdoor flush and straight draws. Yeah. Well, the, the Ace 5 can still bet for value. The Ace 4, the Ace 3, uh, both can pick up, you know, gut shots plus flush draws. So they get to be really aggressive. And it's the same with the Ace 10, Ace Jack, Ace Queen. Those hands can pick up straight draws and flush draws on turn. So we get to be really aggressive with them.
And I think they're also, I mean, they're a little bit polarized as well. I mean, you're not gonna win by checking.
Yeah.
So it's like you're, you're betting there just because you have nothing, but at the same time you do have an ace.
And obviously our opponent has a lot of King X. But our opponent is somewhat capped too. Like we expect to take Ace King out of our opponent's range. Against a fair amount of opponents, we're taking aces and queens and, and jacks out of our opponents' ranges. So they are somewhat capped even though they've got some King X here. Yeah, like King Queens gonna be, some people are gonna three-bet King Queens, some are gonna call here. So you're gonna get a portion of the time that they don't. But, uh, yeah, so let's see what I did here. I checked. And this is again, just me being kind of silly. But we're not playing theory in these tournaments. Like this is a check, let people catch up. So we'll go ahead and go as played here. We check. And we'll put a one-third pot in for villain. And I'd be curious to see like if we're ever raising here. Are you ever raising here, Frank? Cause I know you'll raise here as a bluff. So are you ever raising here for value?
If I, if I'm checking, if I'm checking this flop, then I'm checking it for a reason. I'm more than likely just gonna check call. I, I mean, if I'm checking, it's because I assume that villain is going to bet. Because if I, if I, if I don't think they're gonna bet, like if I don't have any info on this person, if I just sat down with this person, I'm betting.
Okay.
Okay. But if I'm checking, it means I've got some kind of info on, on villain. And so, I mean, I'm checking to see them bet and then I'll, you know, probably time call, not timeout call, but I'm not instant check calling. I think that says I have a king if I instant check call. But I'm check calling and then check raising the turn. And that may just say that I have a king on the turn, but at least I've got two streets of them betting. That's, that's my exploit. That's what I do that a lot. If I'm, if I have info on somebody that just loves to bet. Because I run into these people quite a bit in, but that's in cash, not so much tournaments. So, I mean, I think if you're check raising, uh, I don't know what's calling you except for somebody that just doesn't believe you or somebody else has a king and you gotta hope that they have, you know, King Jack here.
So I, I think this is where, I think this is where we get to wrap our head around the balance side. Because like, our instinct when we get a bet here is we're gonna wanna raise a lot. With a lot of bluffs and also a lot of vulnerable hands. Like let's just say we have a hand like pocket sevens here. The reason pocket sevens wants to raise here is because we can be ahead of so many of his stabs. He can have ace high stabs, he can have 5X stabs, he can have pocket sixes. And our
We wanna steal the equity. If they've got Queen Jack.
Right, exactly.
Raise and they hit a queen on the turn, our sevens are
Right, they're dust. So, so because of that, we have to raise a lot of our weaker hands. And when we're raising a lot of weaker hands, in order to be balanced, we have to raise our strong hands too. So in situations like that, we're gonna raise all of our King X here. Not, again, again, this is theory, right? This is being balanced. This is against a great opponent. Like we have to kind of shift that thought process. But we have to raise all our value here because we have so many weak hands that we have to raise to protect equity. You nailed it on the head. We gotta deny equity to those Queen Jacks and Ace Queens and all of those hands. So that's why we see a really high raise percentage here. The other thing is, I'm just gonna click, even though we called here, I'm gonna click the raise button. And I, I almost guarantee you, we're gonna see MP2 defend a really wide range here. Which is another reason why we get to raise a lot. Ah, it's not as much as I thought. Okay. Well, yeah, 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 it is. I'm reading it wrong. Yeah. So when we raise here, villain only gets to fold 22% of the time. They're calling 64%. They're actually re-raising 13%, which again, it's just, that's a savage level I won't get into today. But they get to, they get to go, uh, a really, really large percentage of the time. And so that's why we get to actually, like we actually get to raise hands like sevens and eights for value because of the fact that they have to call with 80 Because of the fact that they have to call with eighty percent of their range. Um, as played, we called. Man, we're gonna learn so much over this next two months Frank, it's, it's not even funny. Is a four of spades, we're gonna call it a four of hearts, it's just a, a suit that matches, um. One of the kings, so we're gonna put that in and it'll take a second for the fair use delay to come up. And then we see here, now it's interesting, we slow down a lot more, what, well, it's because we check called. Right? So like check call leading here would be really, really bizarre. We do have, um, twenty-two percent of the time we're leading. Uh, and it looks like a lot of hands where we've picked up equity. Like our ten eight of hearts, our nine eight of hearts, like all of our flush draws now wanna lead. And this is kind of like a set our price type thing, right? Like we're, we're leading here thirty percent pot because then they're just, they can't raise a ton. And we get to kind of basically give ourselves direct odds to hit our flush draw on the river. Um, versus like calling a really large bet from our opponent a lot of the time. Um, our particular combo here, king queen, as played, checks back a hundred percent of the time. Cuz we expect the opponent to bet a really large percentage of the time. That's not actually too surprising for me. Uh, villain checks behind. Which gets us to our river, which is an interesting river. It is the offsuit five. I have no idea what theory is gonna do here. I assume we have to bet for value here.
Again, just, it, I mean, check, check, no.
I think we have to go for some value here, but we'll see. Cuz again, this is gonna assume that villain's playing perfect and so villain's gonna have some bluffs on the river. I feel like though, this is just gonna be a slam dunk bet here. Once it, uh, kicks through. God, I just wanna do this like twelve hours a day for the next two months.
I would love to do it.
Yeah, so it is checking twenty-three percent of the time. Um, but the hands it's checking are queens, right? That have really good showdown value and make a good bluff catcher and block. His highest frequency of king queen, um, which is like the most, the, the best king X handy can have. Uh, quad kings, which obviously blocks the nuts. Um, pocket sixes, we're gonna see this a lot. I've, I've, I've seen this in doing some theory study with Drew earlier this spring. That theory will just pick some small pocket pairs. And both turn them into bluffs and bluff catchers. So like sixes blocks six five, which is the largest percentage of, uh, five X that our opponent's gonna have. Um, so it's taking the hands that block their best hands and turning them into bluff catchers, but a vast majority of our range here is betting. Let's kind of break it down by the two largest, well, there's three main sizings, the fifteen percent. Is going to be predominantly, let's see. Interesting, it's a lot of our ace highs, I guess betting for value. This is really interesting. Um, a lot of our ace highs are betting thin, our pocket eights, our pocket sevens. Um, we don't have. True, true. Um, so we do get to bet them for value. Um, it's interesting that some of the, like this ace jack suited. Um.
Looks like I, I would expect it to look, honestly, like it doesn't look like anything I wouldn't, you know.
Well, the ace, the ace jack suited is a little surprising to me in that the ace jack suited that, um. Brick the flush draw wants to go all in, wants to go two hundred and fifty-nine percent pot. And we actually have a fair amount of hands here that just want to over jam pot. Um, and, and basically if you can, I don't know how well you can see the dark brown here, but like our value hands that wanna go. Two hundred and fifty-nine percent pot, which is just a, absurd spot that I've never even considered, but like our king queen. Um, with backdoor clubs wants to exclusively jam here. Um, our king queen of spades, basically not blocking backdoors, goes two-thirds jam, one-third pot size shove. And then like half of our king jack suited, half of our king ten suited. Um, almost all of our ace king off, almost all of our ace king suited, all of that wants to shove for value. And that's balanced by like all of these like ace queen offs where we're blocking all of the king X and. We're unblocking backdoor flush draws. Or sorry, we're unblocking the flush, well, let's see, let me, let me get this right.
Only complaint about this software is the color coordination, the color.
Yeah, I'm sure at some point they're gonna give you customization on that and that customization might already be in the system and I just don't know where it is. Um, cuz I know on the regular range trainer pro, you can customize the color, so if it's not there yet, it'll be coming soon. Um, cuz yeah, that would, like, I like going with brighter colors that are like a little bit more easy to see. Um.
Like the gr- you know, the green and the.
Yep.
Orange.
Yeah, 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 I totally agree. Um, yeah, I don't know. I don't wanna mess this up. I'll, I'll check after this hand.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about it right now, but I just was trying to get that in there just. Somebody was listening.
Right.
Wants to make an improvement, that would be a massive improvement is to change the color.
But yeah, it, it's interesting cuz like, are you ever shoving for value here?
Um, yeah, I mean. It's, it's an exploitative, exploitative shove, you know?
Well, it's sick that it's a theory shove too, and I'm assuming it's a theory shove because. Like, the, the, I'll, I'll, the reason it's a theory shove in my head, this is my opinion, again, we're gonna have to speculate some as we get into this realm. But the reason I think it's a theory shove is because we get to get fold out some five X here, right? Like, it's really hard if you jump, jam two-point-five X pot for an all-in here, we're shoving twenty-three into a ten big blind pot. And they're holding six five, how much do they hate their life, right? Knowing that we can, we can sometimes just have ace queen there and sometimes we can have king queen and, and they don't know, you know, like that's the beauty of the spot. Is you get to make them fold some really strong hands and you also give your nut hands max value. Uh, when you're in that. So this is something I'm gonna have to grow a lot in. Uh, I don't even begin to know how to internalize all this. And what's even sick is there's some eight, like, like here, this ace five of hearts. Um, this ace five of hearts has a thirty-seven percent jam. Um, which is wild to me. Uh, ace five of diamonds has a ninety-seven percent jam, so we even get to jam some five X here. Um. Yeah, this is interesting.
A lot of times ace high is good here.
Yeah, well, let's do this, let's, let's jam the twenty-five percent po- uh, the two hundred and fifty-nine percent pot. And let's just see what our villain, what villain's supposed to do. I think that'd be really valuable for us. Cuz I would never do this in game, so I'm curious, like when I shove here, like what is our villain's supposed to respond, supposed to be?
I think it's cool that there's a little delay, there's actually. I saw something online about there's actually some software like this that doesn't have delay. And that's making people mad.
That's bad. So their response is pretty tight. They're, they're only calling twenty-two percent of the time, they're folding. And actually, this actually, duh, I should have known this. This is not hard to figure out, like when you shove two hundred and fifty-nine percent pot. They're just calling with the twenty-two percent best part of their range. Like that's, that's, it's actually just straight math at this point and so. They actually don't get to this river with a lot of five X. Um, which is interesting. They have to fold out a lot here. Um, they have to fold aces part of the time, they've gotta fold all of their ace highs, they basically only get to call with a king. A five, they do get to call with jacks a hundred percent of the time, tens about eighty percent of the time. Um, and then they mix in some looser like, uh, bluff catch calls with their smaller pairs. Um, but this is pretty value heavy, so.
It's hard to put one tens and jacks though.
Right.
Um, because they didn't three bet us three flop.
Well, and some of that, again, this is where the, the nuance of theory gets in cuz nobody plays perfectly and you're gonna run into some players who will perfectly. Flat with tens and jacks there and some that won't. And so it's never gonna be perfect, but, um, yeah, this is interesting. Cuz like we are just gonna get pure value, like when we have king queen, we're just gonna get pure value from king ten, or king jack. Um, and if they are pure calling, they're, they're good pocket pairs. It's really interesting to me that queens are only a partial call and jacks are a pure call. Um. I, I mean, I know it has to do with blockers and I think if we go back like. It's because we're bluff catching with queens, we're checking back a lot of our queens, um. That, that's interesting, yeah, I, I, we're gonna find some spots like this where it's just gonna be hard to kind of understand like. How that works, but, uh, this is a part of our game, like getting these over jams in for value and then picking the best bluffs to go with it. Is gonna be a big area of growth for both of us over the next, uh, couple of months. Oh, oh, look at this, look at this, I actually jammed here. There, there is no way in the world that I was thinking that this was a jam from a theory perspective. There's like none, like I don't know. The, I actually hate this from an exploit perspective cuz this guy's like super capped here, but that's hilarious that I actually jammed there, that's just pure luck, nothing more than that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so I don't know if we've got EP versus button, let me see. I don't think we do, we might, yeah, EP versus button's not here, so we'll go to the next hand.
I, I can't believe ace nine off is a, is a, you, is an under the gun raise there.
Well, there was a guy missing from the table. Did you see the, we were actually seven-handed? That's why. Yeah, we don't have EP versus small blind here yet either.
Off under the gun, that's, I guess that's something I need to work on.
Alright, so this'll be a good one, alright.
Do you have something after we do this, remind me, there's something I need to tell you.
Okay.
It's about RTA.
Nine, nine, seven rainbow flop. Alright, so this'll be a fun one.
I like this. I like, I like the ten eight suited.
Yeah, this is definitely a pure open from a theory perspective. Now villain's a little bit shorter. I put in twenty-seven to thirty-five big blinds effective. So I'm not really honestly sure why this is in here because this is only like thirteen big blinds effective. But we can still treat it like this guy's got a bigger stack and kind of just at least see what it would do on flop here. Like this is an interesting spot cuz it's a, it's, it's a. Like, uh, officially, it's a very, very static board. The best hands quad nines, it's not gonna change on any turn card. Relative to the situation, this is a somewhat dynamic board. Uh, it does hit opponents range decently well, they have a lot of nine X and they're gonna have a ton of straight draws here. They're gonna flop. Gut shots with overs, they're gonna flop open enders, they're gonna flop gut shots with unders, they're gonna, they're gonna hit this board a little bit more common. Than some of the past spots we've looked at. We can see that villain is still checking here a ton and if you guys have watched the LPP videos, you know that generally nine high flops are higher. There's gonna be almost no leading ranges, most of leads from the big blind are gonna be eight high, seven high, six high boards. Um, with the highest frequency being seven high and six high, so we're not gonna see a lot of leads here, this is not surprising. It is kind of funny that, uh, quad nines is like the one lead that, that big blind gets to have here, which is really weird. Um, uh, but we'll go ahead, like we're gonna put the check in for the opponent. And again, this is another in-position, static board, fair amount of range advantage here, even though our, does hit our opponent's board a little bit better. We still have overall range advantage here and we see again, twenty-five percent pot is just an overwhelming bet size on these types of boards. Um, ten eight regardless of the suits is a super strong, uh, bet with just a sliver of check and like. Look, we, we talked about how like some of these spots were gonna have like partial frequencies across our range. If it's like eighty-five to ninety percent across the range, I'm just gonna treat it as a pure bet. Like I'm not gonna get so ridiculous with this where it's like. Well, theory says that I'm supposed to check here, you know. Four percent of the time, so I'm gonna like roll a thirty-six sided dice and if it comes up twelve, I'm gonna check here. Like I'm not gonna get that granular with it because our opponents aren't playing perfectly, so we don't have to play it perfectly, but just understanding like roughly. This is a really, really high frequency bet, like maybe like these ace offsuit aces, like I would like factor in, like, okay, once it gets to be twenty-five percent. Okay, we can give it some credence, but this is just gonna be like a pure bet situation. Um.
I mean, we can, we can check those big aces and then when they try to bluff the turn or something, we can raise them on the turn and.
Well, and, and again, let's just say, let's say we check here. Let's just see.
That's the only reason I would even check is, is to.
Yeah, we don't have a turn card, so I can't actually see like, I can't actually play out the turn the way it would have been, but, um. I assume like if we check, we're just like check calling down in a lot of situations.
So many times we just bet here and, and they fold and we just take it down.
Yeah. Yeah, alright, uh, next one, jack ten. Uh, I doubt this is in here, but we'll, we'll take a look. They do have some three bet stuff in here, but again, I don't think button is in yet. Let me just check real quick, I do have. I do have the list.
This is, this is fun, I like doing.
Okay, yeah, EP versus button's not in here yet, that's why we don't have it. Um, so yeah, this one's not gonna be in here. Yeah, and, I mean, this is like, we're looking at literally one position versus one position at one stack depth, like we're gonna. Over the next few months, we're just gonna open up so many avenues here and so many things that we're gonna dig. Deeper into, uh, as we get, uh, further and further in this.
These are like common stack depths that we're going to, uh, be running into like when we're. Like day two or late day two of, uh, the World Series main event.
Right.
So, I mean.
Yeah, and right now, I'm looking for trends first and foremost, like the more trends I can find, the better. And then I'll try to learn like some of the, like fill in the cracks of just like some of the spots where our opponents. Or like where we start to deviate from the trends and we e- end up in unique situations, so. Here's another spot, we have huge range advantage, uh, we're in position. Now this is a little bit more split than we've seen in the past. Where, um, we're obviously betting here just like infinite amount of the time. We're betting twenty-five percent pot fifty-eight percent of the time, we're betting two-thirds pot here forty percent of the time. So, um, and we actually have, uh, three percent of the time we're betting a hundred percent pot, but I'm not gonna pay attention to that for now, so I'm really curious. Um, we're betting range here, so I'm really curious where the times we deviate and go big are. Um, so like king jack top pair, looks like top pair with, uh, well, these are all pretty similar. These are mixed frequencies, like a lot of our top pairs. It doesn't really too much matter on the suit, that's kind of interesting. I guess it's because like we can't have. The only backdoors we can have are diamonds, but it doesn't seem to affect anything. So this is a place, I'll just be honest, I struggle Frank because I see this and I'm like, I don't know how to internalize this, like.
What, what, what do you mean?
Well, so, no, 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 we're betting here, uh, ninety-nine point four percent of the time, that's the, the, the part is. Deciding which hands.
Whether you should bet small or large?
Yeah, like trying to figure out the times we bet small and the times we bet large. Um. Because it looks like, it looks like our, okay, I think I'm, I think I'm figuring this out. It looks like most of our larger bets. Are the ones where we're blocking straight draws, right? You see this, so like king jack. Blocks jack ten, it blocks ace jack, right? King ten blocks jack, uh, ten and ace ten. King nine blocks jack nine and ten nine. Um, jack ten like blocks those hands and has like straight draw, like it looks like a lot of these. Now here's an interesting one Frank, so with our jack ten suited.
Nine also blocks, it, it's, it's an out that, I mean, it has an out that jack ten's gonna need. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, 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 it blocks the straight draws and the outs for the straight draws. Um, this is one interesting thing to note, jack ten suited here. All of our jack ten suited split down the middle between small bet and big bet, except for jack of clubs, ten of clubs. The straight flush draw actually just pure bet small here. And this is something I have to get better. And this is something I have to get better at too because like in these spots, if I flop an open ender. You know, I think I do get to some bigger bets here some of the time cuz I just I feel like it's a good bluff that can still get there, but when I have a straight flush draw. I really wanna go big here cuz I'm like, man, I've got a ton of equity and I'm gonna bleed some of that equity in the turn. I my instinct here from a theory perspective is not to go small here with with that much equity, so it's interesting that that's a pure small bet.
It's saying go small right there?
Uh yeah, ninety eight percent of the time with your straight flush draw here, you're going twenty five percent pot.
I guess it's just yeah, I. I'm I'm just like you. I would love to just go three quarter pot here with the. With the Jack ten of clubs.
And it's specifically Jack ten. If I go to Jack nine, the suits don't matter. Ten nine, the suits don't really matter, so. Uh yeah, that's interesting.
And it's like, okay, let's bet a little bit here and keep the opponent in maybe. Or uh try to induce a a check raise.
Well, I mean, from a theory perspective, we're never gonna try to induce, but.
No, I mean, if we're betting small right there, it's like we're saying. Hey, um. Uh we're saying to villain, I don't really have a whole lot. I don't wanna bet a bunch. I just wanna bet a little bit. And maybe villain interprets that and uh as weakness and then. Well, if they go for the check raise, then we're we're getting it in.
Yeah, we're never folding. We're never folding the Jack ten.
So that's the only reason I I could see for betting the Jack ten small. Uh is to uh induce villain to check raise.
Something else that I think is a really great thing to see here, our nines are almost exclusively twenty five percent pot bet. Our eights go down to about seventy percent pot bet. Or slow bet, small bet, small pot bet, seventy percent, twenty five percent pot bet. It's hard to say all these percentages. Our sevens. Go down to sixty to fifty percent. Small bet. Our sixes go down even more like the smaller our pairs get, the more theory wants to bet big for the same reason we talked about on that other hand. Equity denial, right? Um and our fives go really big here because not only do we have a super strong hand. But we unblock all of our opponents' King X and Queen X, so like. Even though fives is a stronger hand than King Queen. King Queen blocks so much of our opponents' calling range that we have to go small. Fives doesn't block almost any of our opponents' calling range, so we get to go really, really big. Um but noticing like this pocket pair thing, I think we're gonna see this a lot where the smaller the pair gets. The more likely it is to bet big because it's vulnerable. Um let's see what our flush draws are doing here. A seven of clubs is split down the middle, A six of clubs is split down the middle. Um this is interesting too. Ace of clubs, five of clubs. This is another spot I get into so much. That I wanna study this a lot is these pair plus flush draws where we just have so much equity. Like that like like pair plus a flush draw, you're just almost never below fifty percent equity against your opponent's range. You're just crushing, so it's like a spot we wanna get chips in. Uh but I feel like every time I get in those spots, I just brick out twice and I feel like I just punted half my stack.
And it's just the ace five of clubs.
It's ninety three percent ninety three percent small pot bet, twenty five percent pot bet. Um so it's it's similar to the Jack ten where we just have a lot of equity.
Hey, I learned something today.
I hope so.
I I normally bet big on that on uh in those places.
Well, and again, if you're up against a bad opponent that's over calling, you wanna bet big, right? But against. I I think what this is is again, we have to think, we have to shift our thinking to being balanced here. Like we need to balance our top set of Kings and our top set of Queens with some hands that are still decent equity, but not. Raw equity or realized equity, right? And so we get to mix in some of these Jack ten suited and Ace five suited. So that our overall small bet percentage is weak cuz think about this, we're betting range here. We're betting fifty eight percent of. Hands are betting twenty five percent pot. We have to have some strong equity hands in there, right? We can't just bet fifty eight percent of the time. Bet small with all of our weakest hands and then only bet big with our strongest hands. Then our opponents just get to go, oh, you bet small, you're weak. I raise you, you're screwed, right? Like we have to have some hands that have really good equity and so taking some of those like. Unrealized hands and mixing them into our small betting size kind of protects that range a little bit more. Um and so I guess the best way to think about it for me is anytime we're betting. Anytime the biggest percentage of our range is betting a particular size, we need to expect to find some high equity hands as well as some bluffs. And that's that's what theory is kind of doing here.
It looked like to uh to some of the more experienced players that we run into, it looks like a down bet. And um I never even. You know, coming up, I never even thought about. Down betting. I was never big on pot controlling and stuff and that's kind of a popular thing now. Uh people down betting when they don't really have much. And it looks like what they call a down bet and that. Might induce a raise, a check raise.
It's one of those things where you see a lot of better players do the small flop size, big turn size and we've seen that. Three or four times now going through this video and I think we're starting to see why we see that so much because theory likes to do a lot of that. It's just making that shift of where like. The exploitative wise, we're just gonna bet a ton of weaker hands, small and a ton of stronger hands, big. To the theory side where it's like, okay, now we need to take some of our weaker hands and put them into our bigger sizing. And now we need to take some of our stronger hands and put them into our smaller sizing. We need to be intelligent about which hands are which. Um so this will be an interesting spot. This is a spot that I get into a lot where. I flop, I I brick flop out of position. The ace is on the board, which is a hand that's in our range, but it's also in our opponent's range. This is a spot I lose a lot of chips in, so I'm really excited to check this spot, so. Um King Jack suited, Ace seven four flop. Uh if we just look at like a lot of our hands here, this is one of the largest. Check backs I think I've seen so far. Granted, small sample size. This is a seventy six percent check back. Um that's massive to be checking back that percentage of our range. Um what are your thoughts on that first and foremost?
The worst flaw or one of the worst flaws we could see.
So why do you think this is a bad flop? Because we're from early position. We're gonna have a lot of Ace X in our range. Our opponents, we can take out aces, Ace King.
Alright, it's a bad flop for our actual.
Agreed. Terrible flop for our actual hand. But are you surprised? Are you surprised that we're checking seventy six percent of the time here? Cuz I'm a little shocked that it's this high. I wouldn't have expected it to be like sixty sixty five percent.
No, because what when we raise, what's calling us? You know, um.
I mean, it's it's a condensed capped range, right? Like it it's it's condensed. He's not calling us here with. Five, six suited, six, sevens, like he ends that loose at the stack depth, but he also doesn't have aces or Ace King, right? He might not even have Ace Queen suited or Ace Queen off like like we.
We're getting called by like. You know, Ace, Ace ten and down um.
Right, it's gonna be a lot of weaker suited aces and some of the offsuit Broadway aces. Um there are gonna be a lot more suited hands, so this there is a concern about that. I don't know how many straight draws he has here. He really shouldn't have any at the stack depth, so I don't think we're worried about five, six, six, eight. Um he definitely can have pocket sevens. Um I don't think pocket.
That they will.
This is this is actually his range.
Their their stack is like one twenty.
No, wait, this is our range. Alright, so let's.
Yeah, this is our range, but their stack is like one hundred and twenty big, so I would say that five, six isn't.
Well, no, their stack is a hundred and twenty bigs, but they're relative to us. It doesn't matter that they have a hundred and twenty bigs. If we've got thirty. They're gonna play it as if it's a thirty big blind stack.
Yes, I'm looking at the exploitive.
If we check here, this is what his range is supposed to be here. Um it's really tight, so sixes plus. He's gonna have aces here, I guess a percentage of the time, but very, very low, so like. This but we haven't talked about this yet. This square size proportional, what this basically does. Is it factors in the percentage of the time they actually have these hands in these spots. So like aces you'll see here is really, really thin because a vast majority of the time he's supposed to three bet aces. Vast majority of the time he's supposed to three bet Ace King. Vast majority of the time Ace King, same with Kings. So like this is kind of like something you can click to see. Relative to like what part of their range actually gets here and so you could see. The percentage of his range that actually gets here is a lot of the suited aces. He doesn't even supposed to have Ace eight, Ace seven or Ace six here, so. This is a really, really condensed and capped range. So it's really interesting. I actually want to treat this like we did the right thing, even though we bet here. Um because I just like we're just not. I just don't think we're gonna bet here with this particular hand like so King Jack suited. Yeah, the only hand that's really supposed to bet here is King of Clubs, Jack of Clubs, so basically the flush, the nut flush draw. And then a small percentage of the time we're betting with the backdoor flush draw, but this particular combo is supposed to check here a hundred percent of the time. If we check. We'll go ahead and put a twenty five percent pot bet in, so we'll treat this like he was the one that bet and we just called. Cuz I just don't think in game, like even exploitatively, we probably shouldn't be betting this. Too often unless we're up against just a really, 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 really weak opponent. Turn is the nine of hearts. And literally we have no bets here.
Right.
Which makes sense. Um villain now checks forty four percent of the time and again, this is the same thing. Almost no uh forty percent pot bets, almost no all ins. This is a vast majority of his betting is eighty four percent pot like. Theory just loves these massive turn bets. Um had he gone? I'm gonna turn this off so it's just easier to see down. Had he gone uh eighty four percent pot here? Um we have very, very few bluff catchers, like almost all of our bluff catchers have have flush draws. So we just have to play really, really tight here out of position with this hand. Um really, really tight, like we don't even wanna bluff catch King highs here because. Like even though like let's say he has a hand like. Ten eight suited here. He still has really good equity against us. It's not like King High is like, oh, you got ten eight suited. I'm ahead. I am so excited right now. It's like, oh, I'm technically ahead, but equity wise, I'm just not. Right? Like if we click the equity tab here, like you can just kinda see. Like all of this is just terrible equity, so even though. We're ahead from a technically ahead standpoint, from an equity standpoint, we're just getting smashed, so like because of that. We really have to have like a pair or a flush draw to even continue here. Um as played, he checked behind, which gets us to the river. Which is an offsuit ten. And now it's interesting, now that it's gone check, check, we definitely have some bluffs here. Look at this bluff here. King Jack suited now becomes an a a a massive bluff. Um hundred percent bluff frequency here. Now, now, this is this is interesting too. Um the King of Clubs, Jack of Clubs. Uses a fifteen percent bet size on the river here. And the reason is we're blocking all of the flush draws that we want them to have, right? We want them to have a bunch of busted flush draws here. Whereas like King of Hearts, Jack of Hearts. Um actually overbets the pot a hundred and fifty uh a hundred and seventeen percent pot here, goes overbets pot as a bluff. Um. I mean, this makes some sense, I guess, like. Again, I'm not really sure how to eternalize all this. Um all of our King X suited and off suits just go ham here. So basically all of our Broadways turn into bluffs. I don't know, Frank. I don't I don't know what to think about this.
All of our Broadways turn into bluffs.
I mean, I guess all of our Broadways that don't have pairs have no showdown value, right?
Right.
So I guess those just make the best bluffs here at this point?
If you have zero percent chance to win, I mean bluffing is your best option. We are unblocking the flush. Draw, excuse me. So.
Yeah, like all of our of all of our unblocking the flush draw bets wanna go really big. And for some reason, our flush draws specifically wanna go really, really small. Now, King nine suited and King ten suited because they have pairs, right? Those are just pure checks. So let's look at this from two spots. Let's start with a check. And just see what our opponent's supposed to do. And what we respond to that with and then we'll go back and and look at some of our bluffs and see what our opponents fold. There's so many layers to this onion. I feel like we could just peel this apart like. Infinite.
Right, there are tons of layers to this.
So when we check, our opponent then um bets tens for value, nines for value, sevens for value. Sixes is a bluff. Um aces bet for value, Ace King, Ace Queen, Ace ten, Ace nine, all bet for value. Ace Jack actually checks behind, which is interesting. Uh I I'm guessing that has to do with the fact that like. It's a it's one of the weaker single pairs that we have and it also blocks like Jack. Eight, Jack ten, some of the hands that our opponents can have and whiff with. Um. King Jack just checks back and shows down. King shows down, Queen shows down. Their bluffs are King Queen suited, kind of the same bluffs we have, which is interesting. Um King Queen off that blocks uh. Oh, yeah, King Queen off that blocks the flush draws. So we have a lot of blood like King. It's interesting in spots where our bluffs and our opponents' bluffs are very similar. Um I wonder how often that's gonna be the case. That'll be something to look at. Jacks are pure call, Jack tens are pure call. Uh and if they go the twenty two percent uh of the time that they bet here, uh sixty seven percent pot. Then we just end up calling with just like all of our value range here. Um I can't even begin to internalize some of these like check raises on the river like this is just. This is gonna take some work, man. Like how the heck do you get a check raise here with eight, seven suited? Like just a pure check raise here with eight, seven suited. It's just so disgusting to me like. I get it, like our check raises for value are all gonna be really strong, so we have to have some check raise bluffs. I just don't know. How in the hell you ever get to the point where you're like in the spot? You go check, check, turn, and then you just check rip river. I mean, I I guess like. We we don't even have Jack eight here. Like this is weird. I'm like, I'm trying to think of like. Like technically speaking, we never have Jack eight here, so having an eight in our hand like. I don't know, I guess this blocks. Does our opponent ever have Jack eight here? No, our opponent never has Jack eight here either, so I don't I don't understand. Um. This is definitely where I'm gonna have to get with coaches and be like, please explain this to me. Because I wanna know like I in intuitively, I just wanna know how you find some of these check raise bluffs here. Like Jack ten suited is the same way, King ten suited. Um and again, like we want to unblock their clubs now because we basically want them. We basically want to get them to fold out all of their club hands that bluff this river. That part makes sense. That part makes sense, but it's just so weird because like King like King and Diamonds, Ten of Diamonds here, right? Like we have decent showdown value. Um so like finding a pure raise here with second pair is a bluff. Uh is is wild to me.
Well, I mean, it the the. Because an ace is not uh is is not checking to the down to the river. See what I'm saying?
True, that is a good point. So you think this is for value? Let me go back one more time and let me just look at their betting range. They do have some aces here. Alright, let me let me hit the square proportional. Okay, so part of the challenge here is they just we this this is something we need to be cognizant of as we get more into studying this. And we're gonna need to use the square size or at least click on it more often because one of the things that's gonna happen is. We're gonna get. We're gonna get deep into a hand and we're gonna start really deeply analyzing this and we're gonna forget that like. The line that got us here was really absurd. I mean, if you guys remember. We went check, bet, call on the flop, check, check, turn. It's not gonna happen very often. So like. While it's great to dig into this, keep in mind, like we're kind of in an unusual spot. So like this is a spot and this is what this is basically showing us. We're really not in this position very, very often. So this is probably not a spot we need to spend massive amounts of time on. Um, but you're right. Look at this, very little ace X, right? Like the one ace X that he's got a a a little trickling of is like Ace, Jack, Ace, ten, Ace five. So because if we're not in this spot a lot, you can see like he's actually got more bluffs here in these spots and more weaker value hands. That's why we get to kind of like play this the way we do. Um, and even then, like look how often we have King ten suited or eight seven, like we have these hands a sliver of the time. So this is probably a spot we're putting a little bit too much of, little bit too much time into thinking about. And as played, it went check and. Yeah, our particular hand just never gets here, so. You wanna do one more?
Sure.
Are you, are you free to do this tomorrow?
Yes. Depends on what time.
What times we're, I'll, I'll work around your schedule. What time's good for you? Yeah, we can do lunchtime. Alright, so one more here. This is another EP versus MP two. Um, and we flop the super epic epic mega nuts here. Um, I, 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 based on what we've seen so far today. Oh, I'm putting in the wrong flop. Uh, based on what we've seen so far today, I what, what, my prediction is we're going big here. Not only do we have a strong hand, but like we have a hand that's slightly vulnerable. I, I think we're going big here. What do you think?
Well, um. I think we found out that check raising is not the uh, or checking is not the play. From earlier.
It doesn't feel like theory slow plays these a lot.
I almost never slow play this stuff. I'm like, because no, I feel like nobody ever believes me. Cause I'm betting a lot.
Well, and this is, this is where like. What the hell? Alright, so this is interesting. We're checking here ninety-three percent of the time on this board. Alright, so let's, let's, let's take a step back and think about this in a vacuum. Let's forget about our hand for a second. This is a ha- this is a board that definitely is gonna have a lot of raises, right?
So, hold on, that, so when we flop trips with the King earlier, it wanted us to bet.
Well, remember, right, but remember, we're, we have to think about a couple of things. We have to think about, um. The percentage of the time we're getting raised, we have to think about how our board hand interacts with the board. We have to think about how our opponent hands interacts with the board. So. When we flop trip Kings, it was a rainbow board, right? And that was a board that we're gonna have a bunch of Kings, our opponents are gonna have a bunch of Kings. In this particular spot. This board's two tone. So our opponents, it is two tone and it's low. So like in the King, King. Right, in the King, King five board, our opponent's not gonna have a massive amount of ranges, raises, right? Um, whereas on this five, five, three board, our opponent can raise this with pocket sixes, pocket sevens, pocket eights, pocket nines. Pocket tens, um, they can raise this with any set of diamonds. Um, they could potentially raise this with some hands like. Seven, eight of spades, eight, nine of spades, where they've got backdoor straight and backdoor flush draws. They've got a lot of raises. And so in situations where opponents have a lot of raises, we don't wanna get blasted off equity. So we are gonna be more cautious. Um, so.
So what happened? I'm confused. What happened? I, we didn't raise this pre-flop?
Yeah, we raised this pre-flop.
Okay.
So, so what I'm saying is like the difference between this and the King, King five board is. The King, King five board, our opponent really wasn't gonna have a lot of raises. Um, whereas in this spot, our opponent can have a ton of raises. So the more raises our opponent has. The more cautious we have to be in general with how much of our range we bring forward with a bet. So I think because there's a lot of raises, our, if our opponent's playing properly, they can have on this board. That's why our check percentage is so high. Now, the, the million dollar question is, now, what are we doing with Ace five suited? And as we click on this, we're gonna see that the Ace five suited. Well, both of our Ace five students are not gonna have backdoors. And so. We're basically a mixed strategy here. We're either going big. About twenty-seven percent of the time, or we're checking seventy-three percent of the time. So there's a couple of things I wanna see here. Real quick, let's just look at the other hands that are betting. Um, it looks like nines. That don't block the club draw. Tens that don't block the club draw. Jacks that don't block the club draw. Queens that don't block the, so like all of these over pairs that don't block the club draw. Want to bet big, both for like, I assume equity denial and just pure value. Um, it is interesting that aces almost pure check with the exception of Ace of Hearts, Ace of Spades.
Like a hundred percent check.
Yeah.
Except one.
But it does kinda make sense in the sense that like our aces like. If we bet aces here and we get raised, we just hate our life at thirty big blinds effective. Cause our only play is.
I, no, I, I like checking aces there.
Right. Like we're just getting it in at that point and opponents, like if they're, if they're raised calling off our shove. We're probably not in the best shape. Um, we will get value against like over pairs that we beat. Um, but we're gonna get value from those hands anyway. Um. And if we raise and they fold, it's a travesty. So like. I think from a theory perspective, like. It's definitely gonna wanna have a lot more pure checks here, which again, I'm just probably rarely, rarely getting to. Um, Kings and Queens actually play pretty consistent regardless of the suits. It's Jax on down where like it really factors in whether you have a club or not. Which is, which is rather interesting. So as played, Ace five is. Twenty-seven percent bet big. Seventy-three percent check. We did check here. And opponent checked behind. Registered, there we go. And opponent's supposed to bet here really wide. But you can again see why they have a lot of pocket pairs here. And.
Exactly what we were talking about.
Yeah, it just wants them to be really aggressive. As played, they check behind the turn.
It wants them to steal equity from.
Right.
Over cards.
The turn is, and, and it makes sense why we have so many check backs too. If they're gonna, if their response is heavy, heavy, heavy bet. Then we wanna have all, a lot of our value in our check, check calling range. Um, so here now we've gone check, check. Turn is the eight of hearts. We still are checking seventy-one percent of the time. Now our Ace five wants to bet a little bit more. It's actually forty percent bet big. Um, fifty-nine percent check. I'm just not seeing, I'm seeing such little. Small bets on turn. We're gonna definitely have to pay attention to the situations where we actually bet small on turn. Cause it's, I'm just not seeing it so far. Again, we've been through ten hands. So this is really small sample size. I think as we get a couple of days into this, we'll get a better feel for. What, but, but like anytime again where we can find trends. And then situations that buck the trend, we wanna stick to it. And right now, vast majority of the turn bets. Are just going seventy-five percent here from a theory perspective. Again, early position versus like, uh, uh, there's a lot of. Asterisks here, but um. The hands that now really wanna go big, um. Our value hands, eights, quads, fives, nines, which are very vulnerable, tens, which are very vulnerable. And then as you go up, Jax, Queens, Kings are getting smaller. Aces still wanna check a ton. Um. Our King eights, uh, again, very vulnerable hand. Um, we're betting almost exclusively big with our non-flush draws. Our flush draw again, wants to have a lot of check back. So this is a adjustment I'm gonna have to make in theory. We're seeing a lot of this. Pair plus flush draw. Wants to put a lot of those hands into our calling range. And not bet.
Tens are being bet more than Jax and.
Right, cause they're, they're more vulnerable, right? Like there, there's more over cards that they're vulnerable to. So checking is. Is better as you get stronger because there's less cards you have to worry about on the river. Nines are almost a pure bet for that exact reason. Uh, Ace, so, so this kinda makes sense. Some of our bluffs, I'm not sure I'm gonna entirely understand. It looks like. A lot of our bluffs are like overs with at least one club locker. Right? So all of our. King of Hearts, Jack of Clubs, King of Clubs, Jack of Hearts, King of Clubs, Jack of Diamonds, King of Spades, Jack of Clubs, like. So I. I guess that's because they're not gonna fold a flush draw. Right? So we, we don't really want them to have a flush draw cause they're never folding it. So that kinda makes sense to me. Let's see what we did. We bet big? Um.
It's, it's almost like we, we bet big, we're betting big to catch up. For the check. Check, check on the flop.
And they just folds.
And they just, and it's just gonna fold them out.
Yeah, I mean, theory does do it. I don't know why I did it from an exploitative standpoint. Um, and it's kinda interesting to see like. When you can go back and see. Yeah, theory bets big. So with our hand specifically. It's betting big forty-five percent of the time, checking fifty-four. So it's like if, it's a, it's a coin flip, like flip a coin if it's heads. We're betting big if it's tails, we're checking. Um, and again, this is a spot where because we have to bet our tens and nines that are vulnerable. And our Jax a percentage of the time, we have to have some super nutted hands to go with it. Um, that's why you see eights is a big frequency, fives is a big frequency, Ace five is a big frequency. Um, because we don't have a lot of five X. If this was like button versus big blind and we had all of these like suited fives in our range. I think you'd see a lower frequency because we could have Queen five and kid, but because we can literally only have Ace five and fives here. Like in order for us to protect our nines and tens, like we have to bet at least a partial percentage of the time with our Ace five. That went quicker than I thought. I think we got time for one more here.
Okay.
Man, I, 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 I'm a little overwhelmed. I'm a little overwhelmed. There's so much to this.
I think, I'm just trying to absorb it, you know what I mean? And uh, I think the more we do this. The.
Well, I was, I was talking to somebody about this uh last week and I was kind of equating it to, um. I was equating it to Snapshove ranges. Remember when we first got into Snapshove ranges, snap, like shove. Shuffle and calling and pure Nash shoving and all that stuff. Like when we first got into that, it was like, oh my god, there are charts for every position. Against every position and every stacked up fifteen big blinds below. It's impossible to memorize it all. But the more you studied it, the more you internalized it, and you just started to get kind of an instinctual, like your instincts got better. Right? And I don't know that I've got all of the jam fold play perfectly memorized, but I have enough of an instinct of it built into my brain. That I'm gonna be within a combo. For most spots. And I feel like this is the same thing. Like we're never gonna memorize all of this. But the more we do it, the more we're gonna internalize it and our instincts are just gonna get better and better. And we're gonna get closer and closer to. What would be, you know, pure theory.
Try to get like one degree better every day.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. We're better today than we were two hours ago when we started this video. Um, so. This is an interesting spot, like this is a pretty static board. Um. This is one of the spots where in position, we're checking a ton, eighty-seven. Percent check back here. Um. We're only betting twenty percent of the pot, five percent of the time, and we're betting sixty-seven percent of the top. Uh, seven point six percent of the time. So we're only see betting twelve percent of the time on this board. Obviously, Big Blind's gonna have a fair amount of seven X in their range. Um, oh wait, no, no, no. I got it. See, I'm still doing this wrong. This is the, this is the big blind. Okay. So, take back everything I just said.
That sounds really.
Yeah.
Did not sound like our.
I know, I know, I know, I know. So uh, uh, the fatigue's kicking in. We're at the two hour mark. Um, so this is the Big Blind's lead. So this makes sense. The Big Blind's gonna lead a lot of their seven X here, um, and then mingle with a few bluffs. Um, I'm sure opponent checked. That's how easily you like, we can, we can mess these things up. Alright, so here's our response. Um, and this is another spot where we're kind of using a lot of mixed frequencies here. Um, and this is again, something I'm gonna have to get better at against better players is, is having some of these more mixed spots. Um. We do have range advantage here. Um.
Look at it, look at, look, look at the Kings. Look at the pocket Kings.
Yeah, pure check back.
I mean.
And this is something that like.
I didn't expect that.
Well, if you think about it, what, what better bluff catcher do you have here than pocket Kings?
We, so we're one hundred percent not gonna represent Ace. Once we have pocket Kings.
Well, I think, I think it, I think it's the, like, we don't need to represent an ace because like.
Like when we check it, we're saying.
But, but. But part of the goal here is we wanna be able to check back this board and not let our opponents assume we never have an ace, right? That's why you're seeing. I mean, obviously aces make sense, but that's why you're seeing like all these check backs.
I understand that, but there's zero. Zero betting with Kings. I never expected to see that. I'm sorry. I just didn't expect to see that. I'm not saying it's wrong.
No, I know you're not. It's just, it's surprising.
It's just surprising and I actually kinda like it.
I love it from a theory perspective because I feel like. It does a couple of things for us. First, it's just a break, great bluff catcher, but also it just gives us easier decisions. If you see bet this flop with Kings. What are we doing on most turns? It's not like most turns are gonna be good for us, right? Like almost all turns are gonna be bad for us. And so it's just really hard to bet flop with Kings. Whereas if we check back here, we just comfortably check, call, turn, and we get to evaluate river. And give ourselves less decisions to make. Um, so I, I, I like this. From an exploit perspective, I, I go back and forth. Because, um, it's just so villain dependent, right? It depends on how wide our opponents are floating us. Cause sometimes you can be betting Kings as a bluff and sometimes you can be betting it for value. Um, it gets really interesting, but uh, as played.
I'm glad we went over this hand. I'm glad you decided to do one more hand.
Yeah, our, our Ace Jax are all like a mixed frequency here. Um, so this is again, something I'm gonna have to get. Figure out when we're doing these. Uh, basically randomized across the board uh C bets and get better at like. Um, doing it. I do think it's interesting. Look at our pure bets. Ace seven is a pure bet, Ace King is a pure bet. And eight, seven is a pure bet. Those are it. Um, and Queen Jack off, I'll never even begin to try to say, Queen Jack off is a pure bluff. Don't ask me why. I, 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 I'm never gonna be, I, it's just mind blowing to me. Like Queen Jack off, just, just bluff. Bluff your socks off on this board. Uh, go to town here. Like what in the hell? Um. These are the things. You know what? I'm gonna take a screenshot of this. I'm gonna create a new folder. Uh, on my desktop called, why are we doing this? And I'm just gonna save a bunch of files. Where it's like, why, why are we pure bluffing Queen Jack here? What are we unblocking specifically or blocking that makes this such a good bluff? Cause this is obviously like. King Jack, King, Queen, King ten, all of these offsuit hands are pure, almost pure bluffs. At a very high frequency and I don't know why. Um. So that, that's something I'll, I'll ask. I'll just send that to Ryan and be like, explain this and you know, like this is.
Tell us. I mean, as a fact, they have like almost. You know, it's no equity, like. Literal, literally. Backdoor equity.
The thing I don't understand is like, it really, like these numbers don't change regardless of suit. Like I would have expected to maybe see like. Okay, if they have the King of Clubs. It's a different frequency than if they don't. But this is just across the board, sixty-seven percent. Or, yeah, like, uh, basically, uh, it's not exactly even, it's, but it's within three percent. We're, we're, we're betting twenty-five percent here and we're checking. The rest of the time. It's, it's very, very close. I guess there is a little bit of difference if you have a club or not, but it's, it's. It's not much. Um. So this is, this is really interesting. Um, but you understand the overall idea here, which is like. We're checking here forty-five percent of the time. But there's no pure check backs in our range with, with the exception of these pocket pairs. And that is something that as you build into your game, I mean, just again, imagine if you're up against a great opponent. It's so much easier to play against you if you're splitting up. Checking back forty-five percent specifically of your range and betting fifty-five percent specifically of your range versus this. Where it's like, no, I could pretty much bet. Or check ninety-five percent of my range. Good luck figuring out which is which, you know?
Right, I love the bet, I love the uh, the betting Queen Jack. Off for the King Jack. I love it.
Well, and I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm probably over like thinking this, cause this is just a C bet spot, right? Like this isn't like some savage like. Well, and I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm probably over like, thinking this, because this is just a C bet spot, right? Like, this isn't like some savage, like. Triple barrel, but.
I bet a huge percentage, so.
And, and, and that's the thing, but like, I don't, like. I guess like, with ten, nines and eights having showdown.
I've got the data, I've got the data to back it up. If anybody really wanted to look at it, I mean. Yes, I mean. I'm C betting a lot because it works, because I'm taking down pots. Albeit they're small pots, but it's better to take down that small pot than.
Well, it's not surprising.
Let somebody get there and take down a big pot from you.
It's not surprising that we're betting seventy percent of the time. It's surprising that we're betting King, Jack off. Higher than maybe a hand like, King of Diamonds, Queen of Diamonds. Or, King of Hearts, Queen of Hearts, like, why are we C betting Queen, Jack off higher than King, Queen of Hearts? And I guess the answer is showdown value. Like, we have some showdown value with King of Hearts, Queen of Hearts that we don't have with Queen, Jack off, and that one X, you know, being a King High instead of Queen High makes a difference. And some of these little nuances like, are gonna factor through, and we're just gonna have to continue digging through. The whys, and, and, and now, again, like, there's gonna be spots where we just don't know why. And we're just going to have to, um, ask somebody, you know, that's better at this than we are, and that's, that's okay. But yeah, this is, this is, this is really interesting. Well, this has been good, Frank, uh, we'll do another one of these tomorrow. Go for, you know, another two hours, and I'm, I, I got it, the green light from Kale, so I am gonna post this on. YouTube and get this out here and give people a chance to see what this looks like, and, I mean, I don't know, like. I don't know how long we spend in EP, like, I'm just gonna save this spot, and we're just gonna keep going through hands, and I don't know, maybe at some point, like. In a week or ten days, we'll just manage to feel like, hey, we got this early position thing down, I don't know. Um, that's one of the great things about recording all this and this journey is. We're gonna go through it for the first time, you guys are all gonna be going through the first time, we'll kind of see how it plays out, but. Um, definitely learned a ton today, I think you did too.
Yeah, and I think it's gonna be cool for people to see you and I actually grow. As players and get better with the GTO aspect along the way. Um, because I'm like. The majority of my experience in play is, is exploitative stuff.
Yeah.
And, more we learn this, the more we know what the correct thing is to do. The more we're gonna be able to take advantage of people that are making the mistakes.
Right, I'm just gonna caution you now, because again, I made this mistake back in March when I started digging into theory, be careful, because the, the, the big trap now as you get into this. Is you start letting this stuff sink in and you sink it in in the wrong places, like. This is all super valuable knowledge, but if you're using it at your local two, five game, when you're playing with six guys that can barely rub two hole cards together.
No, that's why I just said what I said.
Yeah.
We're seeing what the right thing is to do, and now we see what villain, the mistakes that villain is making.
Exactly.
And, we, and that's where we adjust. So, that's, that's what I like, I think it's gonna add more to our game. It's definitely gonna add more to my game, it's good, it's definitely gonna add more to your game. Um, just helps us think about hands a lot better and.
Agreed.
Im- improve, just improving, like I said a while ago, one degree better every day, I'll take that.
Same, same. Well, until next time, for Frank, for me. Guys, check out Rage Trainer Pro, it is a great site, they've still got, I think, twenty or twenty-five lifetime memberships available for their early launch. For the Rage Trainer Pro app, and if you have any questions, feel free to shoot me a DM or message, and, uh, I'll try to help you out. We gotta see you guys soon.